Good evening, everyone. If you all just take your seat, as we get ready to get started. God, we ask your blessings upon us this night. Lead us and guide us in all things, in God's name, amen. We welcome you to the Greater Centennial Amy Zion Church. I'm the Reverend Dr. Stephen W. Pogue. I'm the pastor here at Greater Centennial, and I'll be leading you through some of our time tonight. And so, we're grateful and thankful that all of you have decided to come and join us for this important conversation with these representatives, that we pray that it would be a great conversation, an informative conversation, and one that will help them to be able to go back into Washington to do what is necessary for our communities. And that is the most important thing that we can ask. I'm going to ask the great mayor of this great city to come and to greet us now. Mayor Shaun Patterson Howard, mayor of the city of Mount Vernon.
Good evening, everyone. You know, I'm in a church. I always have to say, giving honor to the Spirit of Christ, who was the head of my life. Can't do that unless you're, you know, when you're in the church. Can't forget that. So, thank you so much, Pastor Pogue, for hosting this tonight. Thank you to our Congressman Bowman for bringing the Congressional District 16 together. When I walked in the room, it's great to see our surrounding communities and neighbors who are participating, because regardless of our ZIP code boundaries, we are all dealing with the same issues. All of us are concerned about healthcare. We're concerned about public safety. We're concerned about workforce development and job opportunities. We're concerned about climate change. We're all challenged in every single one of our communities, whether you're resourced or have lots of reserves or no reserves. All of us are also challenged at the same time by aging and crumbling infrastructure, all throughout the United States. And so, I just want to thank our Congressman Bowman for bringing our Democratic Caucus Chair, Representative Hakeem Jeffries, to Mount Vernon tonight, understanding that this district is important enough to make sure that we're bringing our partners, not just from Brooklyn, because we could say, well, he's from Brooklyn, right? But that doesn't mean he's going to Tucson, Arizona. And so, he is here in CD 16 tonight to hear our concerns and the issues that we need. We need to let our leaders in Washington know that we have their back. They are fighting a major challenge. There are constant obstacles that are being thrown in their way, and we have to be sure to let them know that we appreciate them standing up and sometimes not supporting some things, because so much of the legislation that's out there has lots of other things attached to it that don't benefit our communities and that take away from our communities. And so, as we hear them supporting things and hear them not supporting others, we have to do a little bit of a deeper dive so we understand why they push certain things and why they pull back on other things. But, okay, I guess they're back there. So, with that said, again, welcome to the great city of Mount Vernon. Thank you so much for coming out tonight. I will not be able to stay, because we have two events, well, three events back at City Hall that I have to attend. And please look at them later. We are doing a workshop on the catalytic converters with some of our auto body companies tonight, as well as the police department. That was something that we'd been advertising, so that's happening. We're doing the Ungala as part of Police Wellness Month, recognizing some of our partners. And then, we have the City Council Work Meeting. But thank you so much. And really, I'm looking to follow up and look at this later on and review it, because I'm sure that there's going to be some really, really good conversation. Shout out to the youth shelter for always coming out and the Boys and Girls Club, because we have to make sure that the voice of our young people and our young adults and our emerging adults are always in the room and that we are not forgetting them. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And we thank all of you again for being here. As we want to make sure we're moving our program along, I'm going to ask Thomas Ray to come.
I didn't know I was going to be one of the first speakers, but this is, this is amazing. Great evening, family. Just wanted to get the mic right. How y'all feeling, beautiful people? Y'all all right? First and foremost, it's an honor to be amongst such beautiful souls tonight. It was an honor to get the call in the last minute to come and share some spoken word with you all. And I'mma open up, because I know, just transparently speaking, I know some of you may be looking like, who is he? So, I'mma open up with a poem titled, "Who Am I?" And then, I'mma take you along a journey as I encourage you all, okay? Is that cool? Y'all can hear me back there? Excellent. Who am I? A golden, imperfect spiritual being created in the image of greatness. I am also an image of black power, black love, black strength, black excellence. And the list goes down the line. Rosetta Simmons is the structure of my spine. She is my backbone, my everything. And my family means the world to me. I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for y'all. I appreciate each and every one of y'all. We are one. We are love. I am love. I am a warrior, creative creator, elevator, motivator, crusader, educator, trendsetter, go-getter who knows better. So, I will do better. I am an author, a poet, a king, an all-around cool human being. I am the representation of my ancestors' prayers, and I am blessed to be here. I am Yonkers. I am Tom Ray Jr. I am the future. I am the power of love. R.I.P. the Lu... Because I am all that I say I am. It is more to me than what you see. I am truth. I am me, Tom Ray, y'all. Peace. Thank you for that love, y'all. I appreciate y'all. Back in 2016, I wrote that poem, and I actually facilitated a whom am I writing experience for the community, for multiple communities, so that we can become self-determining who we are. And that poem is... where participants can get the chance to claim who they are, speak for themselves, and create for themselves. And this next poem that I'mma recite for you is titled... I really don't have a title for this poem, but fill, fill the, fill the message, fill the words, and receive the words. Bless up to all the youths across the nation. Enough respect and a god be love soldiers. Marvin said war is not the answer. And the good word says love covers a multitude of sin. Thing is, when will the love for our people begin? It starts with us loving ourselves and uniting like the Hispanics do down on Dyckman. Fact of the matter is, we just like them or they just like us. In God I trust, love is a must. Let's all work on creating a legacy like my brother Gus and own it while laying a proper foundation, teaching our youth the importance of saving. And yes, it's paramount that we save them in our community. And it all starts with unity in you and me. Now, listen, black folk. I'll be the first to admit, I don't know much. But here's one thing I do know. Us melanated kings and queens, we gonna survive and create something out of nothing with a smile on our face, whether real or fake, food on our plates, a roof over our head, and love in our hearts, surviving from the prayers of our ancestors and the abundance of faith, staying true to the model. One hand washed the other, both washed the face. In simplest terms, we all we got. Let's stop fighting over territory we don't own and buy the block. Now, that's leveling up, cooperative economics, to say the least. I pray for Ujai Ma and peace for every one of our family members from the west to the east, north to the south. You know what I'm talking about? We all country cousins out here hustling, living off the land, crushing our goals and plans, elevating one another. Sincerely speaking, I pray you win, my sisters and brothers. And when you do, honor your father and mother and those who came before you while paving the path for the youths coming after you. They're seeking guidance and knowledge from relatable teachers. And for those of you listening, I pray this message reach you. Ain't nothing gonna change until we change. And I'mma say that again. Ain't nothing gonna change until we change. I'mma say it one more time, y'all. Ain't... Get used to things remaining the same. These are the... Straight up with no chasing, no ice. So, as we step... So, as we step forward into more greatness, let's just make sure that we step right, y'all. Peace, man. Or do I keep going? That's it? That's it? Absolutely. Thank y'all, man. God bless. That's my time, man.
Can you help me once again? Give it up for Thomas Ray. We are grateful for him. We've come tonight to hear from our representatives. And I'm so grateful to be able to be the host for this great conversation, this community conversation, because we need to have more of these community conversations, especially if we want to see change in Washington. You know the battles. You know everything happening in Washington and all of those things. But we need to have those representing us that will represent us. And so, we're, I'm grateful tonight that I'm able to present the Congressman from the 16th District. He is one that I called a friend and a brother when he was running the first time, and all he wanted to do was have a conversation with me. But after that conversation, I knew that I had to get behind him and support him. And I knew he was going to win one day. We were doing something in Co-op City, and we were setting up for a news press conference or something. And two older ladies walked past, and when they realized that Jamal Bowman was there, they turned around and said, "It's him. It's him. We just voted for you." And I said, "This is over." And even after he's got elected, we've stayed close. And I've been able to talk to him. And sometimes, I just call him and say, "Congressman, let's pray, man." And just to be able to pray for him. I don't want anything. I just want to make sure I pray for him, because he needs to be covered when he goes and make sure that he's representing us. So, I present to you Congressman Jamal Bowman. So, Rafer, would you come?
To all the dignitaries in the house, thank you Reverend Poe for hosting this Town Hall meeting. And to Thomas, I got the message. I got the message. Good evening, Mount Vernon.
Good evening.
Good evening. Giving all honor and glory to the highest God, who has blessed each and every one of us to be here today in the land of the living. It is truly an honor for me to introduce one of our great leaders in Congress, the honorable Congressman Hakeem Jeffries, who represents the diverse 8th Congressional District of New York, an area that surrounds large parts of Brooklyn and a section of Queens. He is chairman of the House of the Democratic Caucus, where he serves as the 5th highest-ranking member of Congress. I'm impressed. While serving his 5th term in the United States Congress, Representative Jeffries is a member of the House Judiciary Committee and the House Budget Committee. Congressman Jeffries is considered an effective leader, legislator, a mover, a shaker, and most of all, a fighter. In New York and across the country, he has been an ardent voice and is very passionate on issues such as voting rights, public safety, policy accountability, housing, and protecting seniors' rights. He is a powerhouse, a rising star in our country, and he continues to let his works speak for him. So, without any further ado, I have to bring on the Honorable Terry Clemens, Westchester County Legislature, District 2, and I guess you'll finish it, then. I thought I was bringing him on, so I'm gonna go back with him.
It's my great honor to be here this evening with everyone. I want to thank Reverend Poe for having this event for the community. I'd like to thank our two congressmen that are here. Appreciate you being here. Okay. I would like to... Okay, I'm gonna... In a minute. Okay. Okay, so I would like to acknowledge the people that are here, especially Reverend Poe, who is doing this, First Lady Iris Poe, Mayor Sean Patterson Howard, our mayor was here earlier, Councilman Ed Potate, Mount Vernon City Council, Reverend Daniel Morton, Mount Vernon Controller, Senator Shelley Mayer, New York 37. I don't know if everybody's in the house, but these are people that are supporting the community. Senator Andre Stewart-Cousins, New York State Majority Leader, New York 35. Sabomi McCauley, President of the Westchester Black Women's Political Caucus. Dr. Brown, New Life Ministry Baptist Church and Crew. Joanne Dunn, Youth Shelter of Westchester. Mary Graves, Chairperson of the Mount Vernon Democratic Committee. Judith Watson, Mount Vernon Health Committee CEO. Councilwoman Shanay Williams. Tasha Diaz, Majority Leader, City Council of Yonkers. Nancy Kobelin, the Mayor of Ardsley. Angela Davis-Farish, Nurishel Housing Authority. Delta Sigma Theta Westchester Chapter Social Action Committee. Jane Elkhine Ene, Town Supervisor of Mamaronek. Jewel Williams-Johnson, Westchester County Legislature. Tasha Diaz, Majority Leader of Yonkers. Terrence O'Garrow, Democratic State Committeeman, 82nd Assembly District. Mark McLean, then AAACP President of Nurishel. Andre Wallace, former Mayor of Mount Vernon. Sonia Smash, New Equity Officer, City of Yonkers. And any and all clergy that have joined us this evening. Thank you, everyone, for attending. I would now like to bring on the Honorable Congressman Hakeem Jeffries.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. How are you, sir?
Good evening. Great to be here.
Absolutely. So, good evening, everyone. Huge shout out to everyone in the building. Thank you so much for coming out, whether you are a quote-unquote dignitary clergy or what have you. For you to be in this room and a member of this community and a member of CD16, you are incredibly important. So, thank you so much for being here. So, we're gonna get started with a conversation. We hope for it to be very fluid and very important and serious, but also informal, and then we're gonna turn it over to a few questions from the audience. So, I just want to start with, you know, I'm a freshman in Congress. This is my first time being here, and I can't tell you how important it was for me to be able to reach out to Chairman Jeffries from the very beginning as a black man, leader in Congress from New York City, who represents pretty much the same culture that I represent, to help me out and to mentor me in my first days of Congress. I wanted to thank you, brother, for that formally in front of everyone here.
Thank you.
Now, you are in your 10th term, and you've never seen nothing like what you've been through over the last couple of years. A global pandemic, the worst since the early 1900s, and an insurrection, the first attack on the Capitol since the War of 1812. Can you speak to how this Congress has been different from previous Congresses? And oh, by the way, you also had to deal with the previous president, leading into a global pandemic, leading into an insurrection. Can you just speak to how this experience is different from others?
Well, good evening again, everybody. It's such an honor and a privilege to be here. Thank you Pastor Poe, First Lady Poe, congregation for hosting us, to all of you for coming out. Such an incredible turnout for an amazing member of Congress, my brother, Representative Jamal Bowman. He's a brother, and he's a good friend. And I use that phrase, "good friend," in the real sense of the word, y'all, not the congressional sense of the word, because you know, sometimes you'll hear members of Congress often use the phrase, "my good friend." The distinguished gentleman from the great state of California, my good friend, the distinguished gentle lady from the great state of Florida. Most of the time, you hear a member of Congress use the phrase, "my good friend," particularly on the floor of the House of Representatives. We don't mean it, y'all. But with Jamal Bowman, I absolutely mean it. He's been a good friend to me, to the caucus, the Congress, the country, the Constitution, and the communities that he represents. I brought the alliteration for Jamal Bowman today. But it's certainly a challenging time in the country, the trials and tribulations of the COVID-19 pandemic, an insurrection, economic dislocation, in part connected to the shutdown related to COVID initially and then the impact of that. But through it all, I think we've been working very hard in the House, in the Senate, in partnership with the Biden-Harris administration, to try to deliver for the people and protect our democracy at the same point in time. I came into Congress when Barack Obama was president and got to spend four years in Washington during his second term. And wickedness in high places. But I remember when folks would say, Jamal, back at home in Brooklyn, "Man, how is it? You served with Barack Obama, now you got what's going on there now, and whether it's Trump or Trumpism." And I remember reflecting that there was no better time to be in Congress. In dealing with first Trump, then Trumpism, and the effort to really turn back the clock. And so, it's just been an experience in the trenches with great members of Congress like Jamal and others, who recognize the fragility of the moment and the importance of the moment. And I'm convinced that collectively, we'll continue to rise to the occasion.
Thank you. You know, as a freshman member, it's sometimes overwhelming to even just be in the institution that is the Capitol. Just the physical structure is often imposing. It's, I'm overwhelmed by the history. I'm overwhelmed by the statues. I'm aware of the Confederates' role in building the actual Capitol. So, I'm often reminded of our history of white supremacy and how it still lives in our country today. And a couple of weeks ago, I went back to the Capitol after spending August here in the... And raised in honor of the Queen's passing. And I just took a moment to reflect... Own history to grapple with regarding the black community. But we're honoring the Queen, who also was instrumental in the colonization of my ancestors. For me, and when we get a chance to pass each other in Congress, I always talk to you about this. I bring it up in one way or another. About the black agenda. What... And how do we come together as...
It's a great question, and you know, we've been on a long journey. America's a great country. We've come a long way. We still have a way to go to reach that ideal of equal protection under the law, liberty and justice for all, and economic opportunity in every single zip code, right? Those are core principles that I think we, in black America, are still fighting. And we are in a moment, I think, of backlash. If you think about the journey that we've been on, and Jamal and I do spend a lot of time talking about the journey, the history, because it's important to, you know, history doesn't repeat itself, the saying goes, but it does rhyme. And you can find patterns in history that are reflective in the current moment that we're in. And we know... Free, home of the brave. We hold these truths to be self-evident, by our Creator, to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, liberty and justice for all. High ideals... There in the founding of the republic... The question of race. So, and these amendments are passed...
13, 14, and 15.
13, 14. Spoken like a principal and a teacher. Slavery makes it unconstitutional, 14th Amendment. Equal protection under the law, 15th Amendment. Designed to protect the right to vote regardless of race. 1865 to 78, but then the North pulls out of the South. KKK rises up. So, black codes are... Hera against black America. By backlash. And that... Of civil rights heroes, Rosa Parks... The roles. Civil Rights Act, the Voting Rights Act, the Fair Housing Act, Medicare, Medicaid, Head Start... Then... You know that backlash is right around the corner. 1988, we know... Collected in 19... On a campaign to cap... Progress that had just been made by the civil rights movement and the great... Anti-affirmative action, anti-government sentiment... With the failed war on drugs that started in 1971, at the time, there were less than 300,000 people incarcerated in America... Unfortunately, black and Latino. More people incarcerated in America than any other country in the world. I say all that to say, you had the progress of the civil rights movement... And... Supreme... 13, and then the 14th... The... Moment. I believe, without understanding the context within which we're operating... In a backlash moment, a new group of people rise up to keep the progress going, to push back and crush the backlash, and to advance the cause of social, racial, and economic justice. And that's what we're endeavoring to do. Breaking down the mass incarceration epidemic that has afflicted our community, making progress in the criminal justice reform space. Breaking the cycle of violence. We just passed legislation to pour in significant amounts of resources into violence interruption and community-based engagement and activity for our young people to bring their natural brilliance to life. Investing in homeownership in the black community, because our numbers lag behind almost every other group. And homeownership has been the traditional pathway into the middle class and enabled people to pass along generational wealth. And then, of course, leaning into small business, entrepreneurship, and economic development. I think these are all core issues that we're primed to make real progress on, and a lot of significant steps have been taken in this backlash moment, where once again, we're going to be called upon to rise to the occasion, fight through the oppressive environment that has been created, and continue America's long necessary and majestic march toward a more perfect union.
I want to add to that. Absolutely, yes. I want to add to that how essential it is for us to rise to the occasion right now, like in this moment today, immediately, because we cannot allow this backlash to last 100 years. We cannot allow this backlash to last 50 years, or 30 years, or 20 years, or 10 years, or another year, because right now, our opponents on the other side of the aisle have been pushing a big lie that the election was stolen. There are tens of millions of people who are choosing to believe that big lie, and they are organizing in communities across the country to place themselves in positions of power, so that if it comes down to stealing an election in 2024, that's exactly what they will do. So, we have to be vigilant in organizing right now, today, to make sure that doesn't happen in 2024. However, we have an opportunity in 2022, right now, in the general election, because if we can maintain the House, we have the opportunity to grow and capture many seats in the Senate. So, if we grow seats in the Senate and maintain the House, two things will happen. Number one, this man has a good chance of being the next Speaker of the House, the first person of color, African-American, black man-to-be Speaker of the House. And then, we have an opportunity to push forward a real agenda that meets the ideals of our Constitution. Agenda. A care agenda. We'll have an opportunity to do all those things that continue to be held up. Gets over to the Senate, you all raise your hand if you heard of the filibuster. Okay? And as you know, there are members, even in our own party in the Senate, that don't share some of our ideals and values. So, if we can grow the Senate and keep the House, I'm gonna be hitting the road myself to support my colleagues across the country, knocking on doors, doing whatever I can to help us keep the House. It could be transformative for our country, and we could... for our country, and we could, we could win against the backlash that we are experiencing. So I wanted to, Mr. Chairman, transition to the issue of public safety. Obviously, it's a priority to keep our community safe. It's a priority to support law enforcement, particularly those who are doing the job the way it's supposed to be done. It's also a priority for us to hold accountable those who aren't doing the job the way it's supposed to be done. And I came into Congress in 2020, right after we all witnessed the murder of George Floyd. And shortly thereafter, I believe Breonna Taylor was killed with a no-knock warrant. So I wanted us to talk a little bit, I wanted you, Mr. Chairman, to talk a little bit about the balance of supporting law enforcement, who, who do the right thing, but also bringing accountability to the table, because it seems like the accountability part continues to be left behind.
Yeah, it's a great question. You know, we passed in the House in the immediate aftermath of the tragic murder of George Floyd. Good to see our county executive.
Hello, Mr. Latimer.
Joe Latimer, who I served with in the Assembly. But in the immediate aftermath of the tragic murder of George Floyd, we moved the George Floyd Justice and Policing Act in the House, and then in Jamal's first year in the House, moved it once again over to the Senate. Now, this was anchored in making sure that we tried to change the mentality of policing in America that exists amongst some. My own experiences back at home, where we now have an NYPD that is majority-minority, and a lot of folks connected to the community in different ways, is that the overwhelming majority of police officers I've dealt with are hard-working individuals who are there to protect and serve. But like in any profession, there are problematic individuals. But in that profession, when you have problematic individuals, it can result in the loss of life or serious bodily injury. And so, making sure we strike the right balance is important. And our objective from the very beginning was in trying to shift from a warrior mentality that exists amongst some to a guardian mentality that we wanted to exist among everyone. And the difference is, a warrior mentality, when it exists amongst some, they'll tend to view people that they're policing perhaps as enemy combatants. And if you view the people that you're policing as enemy combatants, in some instances, it's going to lead to tragedy. But if you have a guardian mentality, then you recognize that the police and the community are in partnership with each other, are to be valued as humans and respecting the humanity of everyone, and that the community is there to be guarded, guarded and protected and treasured and nourished. And a lot of what we were endeavoring to try to accomplish was to really develop that guardian mentality, so that the police and the community are working in partnership with each other. At the same time, recognizing that you can't solve all societal problems through policing alone, that there are underlying conditions that need to be addressed, which is why we just moved, with Jamal's support, the break the cycle of violence legislation that would include a record five billion dollar investment throughout the country in violence interruption and anti-violence community-based programs. Five billion dollars. And another 1.5 billion dollars, this is a CBC Congressional Black Caucus initiative, another 1.5 billion dollars to help make sure that young people throughout America between the age of sixteen and twenty-four have the job skills and training to be successful in the 21st century economy. Because if we can get our young people something constructive to do, live a productive lives, then we know that the destructive forces of the streets won't drown them. Won't drown them. And, and so it's a holistic approach to community and public safety, supporting the strengthening of a relationship between the police and community. Last point I'd make is that we also on public safety, Jamal didn't mention this, but he was a leader in this fight, passed gun safety legislation, signed into law by President Biden for the first time in thirty years. Gun safety legislation. That included, now, we know most of the guns that come into Mount Vernon, or Yonkers, or Brooklyn, the neighborhoods I represent, Harlem, the Bronx, aren't sold in New York State initially, purchased in New York State initially, certainly are not manufactured in New York State. They come up the I-95 iron pipeline and are illegally trafficked into our communities. But the NRA had stopped us from really leaning in to dealing with the gun trafficking efforts all these years. Until, most recently, where we made gun trafficking a federal crime for the first time in American history. To help our law enforcement partners stop the flow of guns into our communities.
Thank you for that, Mr. Chairman. I, I want to share just a personal story. Some of you heard me tell it before, but I'll say it again as it relates to the issue of public safety and the issue of the, the so, we've heard the term, the social determinants of health. There are also social determinants of public safety. And I was very lucky, growing up. I had an incredible mom who was an incredible role model to me, provided me a home with, with stability and love and consistency. And once I became an educator and now as a member of Congress, I, I never forget how many of my friends did not have that. And because they did not have that, they ended up in some very challenging circumstances, which led to incarceration and/or death. So I was very lucky. I was also very lucky because when I was in high school, I was, I was off the hook in high school. I was, I, I was, I was getting in a lot of trouble. I was, I was so bad in high school, I got suspended from school, came back to school and got suspended the same day I came back. That's how off the chain I was in high school. And my father, who wasn't in my life much, had a home in New Jersey and allowed me to go live with him at this time in my life. So I literally had the opportunity to escape New York. And there was so much peer pressure at this time. This was the early nineties, post crack cocaine epidemic. The movie Juice just came out. Everybody wanted to be Tupac. The streets was real. But I had a chance to escape. Lucky, almost, lucky. How many young people don't have that opportunity? Right? The third thing I want to mention is because my mom was so amazing, I had dreams. I wanted to be a professional football player, like many, many young African-American kids and young kids in general. And my sisters, because the drug trade was the only economy in the black community, my sisters both dated drug dealers. So my role models when I was a kid were drug dealers. And one of them took me on a drug run with him from Harlem to the Bronx. I didn't know where we was going. I didn't realize it was a drug run until I got older. And we were walking down an alley, and he pulls out a gun, and he shoots it in the air two, three times, pop, pop, pop. And he says, here, Jamal, take a shot. And I said, absolutely not. I did not touch the gun. Now, why didn't I touch the gun? Because of my mom and because of my dreams. And that decision was a decision that could have saved my life, and probably did. I tell that story because how many young people do not have dreams, solid home environment to provide mentorship and support, or access to escape their environments? And when we talk about investing in the social determinants of health and violence interruptors, we're talking about bringing in individuals who have these experiences to help our young people and be mentors to them. We're talking about fully investing in our public schools, in sports programs, in art programs, in music programs, in green environments, in housing as a human right. We're talking about investing in the communities that have been historically redlined and marginalized. And as we talk about voting and how it, how important it is and how it matters, and this November, if we can keep the House and grow the Senate, we have an opportunity to make these investments. So I just wanted to share that with, with all of you.
It, it's a great point, and I'll just quickly add, Frederick Douglass, the great emancipator, great thinker, great liberator, once made the observation that it is easier to build strong children than it is to repair broken men or broken women. And that's exactly the point that Jamal is making. Let's invest in our young people, and we'll see success flourish from there.
Absolutely. So we spoke a little bit earlier about the black agenda. I want to talk a little bit about HR40 and reparations for the black community. And I want to connect it to the, the understanding that we are living in a climate catastrophe. And we have to rebuild our economy with the understanding that we got to deal with the issue of climate change. And if we do not, you know, we, we have Hurricane Ira right now ravaging Puerto Rico and Dominican Republic and coming to Florida. If we do not, there will be more consistent, severe storms that will destroy not just infrastructure, but literally take people's lives. We're seeing drought here in the United States. In Utah, I speak to my colleagues from Utah, they say they see drought in areas they've never seen drought before. We see famine here in the United States, but also globally, which is leading to mass migrations and, and conflict in many parts of the world, Syria being one of them. Can you speak to, speak about the idea of a, a, a climate agenda that also addresses the issue of reparations? Because as we know, black and brown people disproportionately suffer from environmental injustice and what just happened in Pakistan. The global black and brown South suffering from the West and our large carbon footprint. Can you speak a little bit to that?
Yeah, no, I think that, thank you for that question. You know, when you think about the climate crisis generally, or more specifically, you know, environmental degradation and the consequences, when you don't have clean air or clean water, tends to be poor communities disproportionately black or Latino, or poor white communities that have historically suffered from the consequences of the climate crisis, environmental pollution, and the lack of adequate investment across the board, viewing the humanity of everyone as worthy of protecting and cherishing. So as we think about sort of emerging from the moment that we're in, I think the concept that President Biden articulated of building back better post-pandemic, and the words that he used, I think, were very intentional in that his view is that we can't go back to pre-pandemic normal. Because prior to the pandemic, a lot of folks were suffering. A lot of folks in communities like those that Jamal Bowman and myself represent, suffering significantly. And we know, there was a survey that had been taken. Half the American people prior to the pandemic reported that they couldn't afford a sudden, unexpected $400 expense. Half the American people, that number higher in our communities, the wealthiest country in the history of the world, that, that can't be allowed to persist. And so, in, in thinking about, you know, a forward-looking agenda that is holistic in nature, it's going to involve making sure that in the new opportunities that are created, as we invest in a resilient economy, as we invest in a clean energy economy, that those are opportunities that are available in our communities as well. Because these will be good-paying jobs, middle-class jobs, sustainable jobs, both as it relates to the environment and as it relates to building a pathway into the middle class and beyond. So I think, I'm optimistic, there's a whole lot of opportunity that is in front of us with the level of investments that are being made under the leadership of this administration working in partnership with us in the House and in the Senate, and that you'll start to see the benefits of that in our communities flow from many of the legislative initiatives that have already been enacted into law.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that. I want to talk a little bit about public health and healthcare. And you mentioned we're the wealthiest nation on earth, arguably the wealthiest nation in the history of the earth, even though I think some African, ancient African nations may have something to say about that. But we are an incredibly wealthy nation, but we have incredible wealth inequality. And we also have this, this conflict almost between the private sector and the public good. And it seems like when you have so many, so many of the things we need to live as commodities and working within a free market system of profit, you're going to negatively impact the health and well-being of society as a whole. So I would love to you to speak a little bit about that, but also zero in on, because I think one of the ways this manifests is the issue, is, is in the issue of maternal morbidity and infant mortality. And how, despite our wealth, we lead the world, the developed world, in maternal morbidity and infant mortality amongst all people. And it's even more severe, I believe, black women are four times as likely, I may got that wrong, to die from childbirth or shortly thereafter than other races. Can you speak a little bit about that issue as well, as, as it highlights, I think, much that's wrong with our healthcare system, but much that's wrong with our overall economic system?
Yeah, well, you know, I, I think it was Justice Brandeis, a former Supreme Court Justice, who once made the observation, paraphrasing him, that in America, we can have democracy, or we can have wealth concentrated in the hands of the very few, but we can't have both. Can't have both. And I think what we have seen is a tremendous concentration of wealth in the hands of the very few, and a pathway into the middle class and a middle class lifestyle being increasingly choked off for all Americans. And it certainly has been a real challenge for black America. You know, with jobs being outsourced and factories and plants closing down, college education becoming increasingly unaffordable, pensions being replaced by 401Ks subject to the randomness-
Republicans want to cancel Social Security. They want to outright end it?
Now, can you believe that they actually, sometimes people, when they tell you what they want to do, you should believe them. They, they said they want to end Social Security and Medicare in five years. We ain't gonna let them do it, y'all. But they want to end it in five years. That's what they have said they will do if they get control of the Congress. But to Jamal's point about public health, you know, I think, led by President Obama, we've been moving in the right direction initially with the passage of the Affordable Care Act and increased investments protecting people with pre-existing conditions, leaning into providing additional resources for maternal health. Startling that the numbers are where they are throughout America, and certainly in traditionally disadvantaged communities. We know public health both involves the need for greater degree of prevention that's available to head off chronic illnesses. But I think it's also going to involve leaning into dealing with the food deserts that exist in so many parts of America, and the lack of access to healthy food, which relates directly to the fact that in many communities that Jamal represents, or that I represent, or others in urban America, or in the rural South, you know, black folks suffering from disproportionate high rates of respiratory illness, or heart disease, or diabetes, or certain forms of cancer. And, and, and many of these ailments actually relate to diet. And if you look at the statistics, and we, we've been talking about homicides and dealing with gun violence, and that's a problem that we have to solve, a problem that we have to solve. But more black people in this country die from drive-throughs than drive-bys. Say that one more time. More black people in this country die from drive-throughs un- unhealthy food than drive-bys, gun violence. So I'm thankful for Jamal's leadership in this space because unless we deal with public health as a chronic crisis, our community is not going to be all that it needs to be.
Thank you, thank you. You know, when the people in this room turn on the news, especially national news, they are constantly bombarded with messages that, you know, Congress is not working, we ain't getting nothing done, why can't we get along, what's happening over there? Is Trump, they're just constantly bombarded because if it bleeds, it leads. And as I often say, this is like the East Coast, West Coast beef, right? It's like you put it out there and you create the environment for more conflict. However, in just two years, under two years, we've passed, and I'm going to forget many of the pieces of legislation, the American Rescue Plan, historic investments in public education in many other areas, COVID response, et cetera. The infrastructure bill, bipartisan bill that we passed. We passed the CHIPS Act, which will bring chip manufacturing back to our country. Passed the Inflation Reduction Act, which makes historic investments in climate and other area and reduces prescription drug costs and some other things that we were trying to get done. Doesn't go far enough, but it does a lot. First time in history passing some form of gun control. You know, recently passed more legisla, well, not just recently, throughout our time passed a bunch of legislation that the House and the Senate hasn't moved, but what I just named, those five areas and others have been signed into law, will be signed into law by the President. So brag a little bit how under your leadership as the caucus, as the Chair of the Caucus, we've gotten so much done as Democrats, and even though there's more to do, there's something we could brag about, right?
Yeah, without question, like at the end of the day, we go to Washington not simply to make a point, but to make a difference. And if you look at our track record, as Jamal just laid out, Congressman Bowman, we've gotten some incredible things done, signed, sealed, and delivered into law. You know, the American Rescue Plan saved the economy. It was on the brink of collapse. We would have been in a recession or worse. Saved the economy, put shots in arms, money in pockets, kids back in school. Passed, as part of it, historic child tax credit payments that reduced poverty in America by 40% to the lowest levels of black child poverty in recorded history. That happened because of our work. And then the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, it's going to create millions of good-paying jobs. And we're working hard to make sure that as those, as that money flows into America to fix bridges, roads, tunnels, airports, the water and sewage systems, the mass transportation systems, create internet access in every single community, that we get our fair share of those job opportunities. Here in Mount Vernon and Yonkers, throughout Westchester County, and the other parts of the district that Jamal represents, equitable economic opportunity. We, of course, didn't stop there, as we mentioned, gun safety legislation for the first time in 30 years, including dealing with gun trafficking that directly affects us. And then we passed the Chips and Science Act to bring domestic manufacturing jobs back home to the United States of America, as opposed to our jobs moving in the other direction. And Jamal is the Vice Chair of the Science, Space and Technology Committee.
Whoa, 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 hold on, hold on, hold on. Sorry, Mr. Chairman. Vice Chair of the Energy Labor Committee, Chair of the Energy Subcommittee on Science, Space and Tech. A chair of committee as a freshman.
Oh wow, oh wow, that's great. That's even better than I thought, y'all. So he's, he, money earned in Mount Vernon. But, so he's both in a significant position of leadership on science-based technology, where he works closely with the Chair, Eddie Bernice Johnson, who's retiring, amazing member of Congress. But it's called the Chips and Science Act. We're bringing chips production back home, most of it is in the Far East, we're bringing it back home. But the science part of it is to make sure, and Jamal helped to lead on this, that we are investing in science, technology, engineering, mathematics, education, so that our young people can get the job opportunities in the 21st century economy. That the innovation economy doesn't just benefit people in Silicon Valley, it benefits people here as well. And then lastly, we passed Inflation Reduction Act. Significant climate change legislation, lowering energy costs, strengthening the Affordable Care Act, lowering healthcare costs, and last part of it, giving Medicare the ability to use its bulk price purchasing power to negotiate lower prescription drug prices on behalf of millions of Americans. That's groundbreaking, that's going to impact your pocketbook. And it was anchored in a principle that if Walmart, or Best Buy, or Target, for example, because they've got all these customers, can negotiate the acquisition of the things that they sell for a cheaper price, benefiting their bottom line, because they got all these customers, that's a basic principle of capitalism. Why shouldn't the federal government that has millions upon millions upon millions of Medicare recipients that the drug companies want access to, why shouldn't they be able to use that bulk price purchasing power? Big Pharma had prohibited the federal government from negotiating better prices on your behalf. It was a matter of law, but in August, we changed it, and now they can do it on your behalf. That's, that's the record of accomplishment that we've been working on. And all of that was accomplished in addition to making sure that Katanji Brown Jackson is on the Supreme Court.
Yes. Yeah, it was, and thank you for your recognition in terms of my work on the Science, Space and Tech Committee. You know, when I first got to Congress and I had the opportunity to be on that committee, people were telling me it's, you know, there's not a lot of action on that committee, it's not that important. And I found myself after choosing to be on this committee at the table during something called the Conference Committee. I believe that's the name of it. And this is where the House writes a bill, the Senate writes a bill, they're slightly different bills, and we got to come together in conference to get on the same page to ultimately pass this bill. And if we didn't pass this bill, we would have continued to be vulnerable to countries in the Far East because they manufacture most of the chips we use in our economy. So to be one of two freshmen at the table and to offer amendments specifically focused on STEM education, worker cooperatives for communities like Mount Vernon was incredibly humbling and incredibly powerful. So we're going to, we're going to close, we're going to make a few closing remarks, and then the Chairman is going to stick around, say hello, and take a few pictures if you all will be a part of that. I just want to reiterate something that I said earlier. You know, voting matters, and if voting didn't matter, I would not be in Congress right now. If voting didn't matter, we would not be on the precipice of a Congress that can move an agenda forward that many of you in this room have been fighting for, for decades. Everything we've discussed up here, we've been able to get done with a slim majority in Congress, the slimmest of majorities. If we're able to grow that majority, we can finally get universal childcare done, in my opinion. We could finally get paid leave done. We can finally make the historic investments in affordable housing that we haven't been able to make as of yet. We can do more on climate, we could do more on lowering prescription drug costs, we could do more on gun control, we could do more with regard to the black agenda, we can do more. Thank you so much. This is the, this is the foundation, this is the foundation of our democracy, freedom of speech. Stick around and I will have a conversation with you right after the end, but let me get to the conclusion. Stick around, I promise, I got you. The foundation of our democracy is freedom of speech. Freedom of speech. So we appreciate that, and brother, I will talk to you at the end. So I want to impress upon everyone in this room, once again, we have an opportunity, we have an opportunity this November, across this country, if we're able to maintain the House and grow the Senate, we can bring transformative legislation to this country, the likes in which we have never seen. So I want to thank you again for being here, and Mr. Chairman, if you have any closing remarks, I would love to give you the last word.
Well, thank you again for taking the time to come out, to participate in this dialogue. I look forward to talking to all of you individually when we end the formal part of the program. But I think as Congressman Bowman indicated, every single thing that we care about is on the ballot in November. Economic opportunity is on the ballot, gun violence prevention is on the ballot. The John Robert Lewis Voting Rights Act is on the ballot. Because if we hold our majorities, we're going to move that bill in the next Congress. And end the era of voter suppression in America once and for all. Social Security is on the ballot, Medicare is on the ballot, reproductive freedom is on the ballot. And nothing short of democracy itself is on the ballot. So let's go out there, do what needs to be done. And again, I'm just so thankful for the Congressman from the 16th Congressional District here in New York, Congressman Jamal Bowman, who is a fighter for the people. Thank you, y'all.
Thank you so much. All right, we're going to take some pictures, we're going to mingle, I think we got some food, is it coming? Okay, we got food, take some pictures, mingle, have a good time, thank you so much for being here. God bless you, we love you all, thank you so much.